Good afternoon. Now, I'd like to bring the regular afternoon meeting of Township of Langley Council to order. And before I ask for a motion to receive and adopt the agenda, there's one addition, and we'll do this after the minutes, and it would be require a motion to allow for a sixth delegation for the evening meeting. And so in order to give that sixth delegation appropriate notice, then I will ask for a motion to waive our procedural bylaw which requires a two-thirds vote. So with that, I'll ask for adoption receipt of the agenda items for the afternoon meeting. Council Arneson, second by Council Whitmarsh, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. Adoption of the minutes, the regular afternoon council meeting of January 29th. Can I have a motion, please? Council Fox moves it. Second by Council Qualley.
I just wanted to say how well and efficiently that meeting was run and actually it was very expeditional.
I've heard otherwise, but thank you. Who's froze? They've got this, they've got this, you pushed your button? It's reversed. They've even given you my name, they've even given you my name now. You run one meeting. Okay, with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. And so now, there's a delegation from, sorry, from Reading Projects Limited to speak in the evening meeting.
That we accept it.
Okay, is there a seconder? Council Qualley? And just a show of hands, all those in favor?
We need two thirds.
Yeah, opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. It still means in the evening meeting, we just need a simple majority to approve this delegation. Still needs to be approved, but we now have the authorization to waive the procedural bylaw. Next item is a motion to resolve the special clause for the items on the agenda and on table. I don't think there's any on table. And Council Fox, second, Council Qualley, anything else? All those in favor? Opposed, carried. We now move to special closed. Thank you. Good afternoon. We'll reconvene the afternoon meeting. Just get back. So we move on to presentations. We have D1 is Soil Enforcement Options, a presentation by staff. Please come forward.
First, I can introduce Mr. Wolfing. He has done presentations to council before, so he'll be leading this presentation. And as the clerk's note references, this is in, I guess, response to council's request, and it's in support of a report that was received by council last year.
Thank you.
Thank you, your worship and members of council. So the purpose of this presentation is to review enforcement options and costs for the deposition and removal of soil within the Township of Langley. And I'm also joined here by, with Josh Isaac, who is the Township Soil Deposit and Removal Coordinator. So in terms of an outline of what will be covered, we'll review the soil deposit and removal process, as well as the associated regulatory framework, review how the township interacts with the Agricultural Land Commission with regards to soil deposition and removal files. We'll review the township current enforcement process, as well as a review of contextual enforcement, review the workload and staffing resources within the department, as well as potential technology advancements and how they could be used within the township, and finally, the options available for formal enforcement activities. So in terms of background, in March 2016, council directed staff to review the practices of other jurisdictions with respect to best practices related to potential changes to current policies, in consideration of more proactive enforcement, shorter timeframes, stiffer fines, and other legal remedies. In November of 2017, council received a report and directed staff to provide a presentation on these soil enforcement options, as well as the associated budget implications. There are a number of acts, regulations, bylaws, and policies addressing soil deposition and removal. Staff operate in a complex regulatory framework that increases with time, increases the time required for each file. There are many applicable provincial and federal acts and regulations, including but not limited to the Agricultural Land Commission Act and Regulation, the Water Sustainability Act, the Wildlife Act, the Contaminated Sites Regulation, as well as the Fisheries Act. Each of the associated agencies, as listed here, including the Agricultural Land Commission, the Ministry of Forest Lands Natural Resource Operations, the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure, as well as the Department of Fisheries and Oceans, each have their own acts and regulations which impact potential applicants, and require our staff to be familiar with in order to help guide these potential applicants through the process. In terms of the township regulatory documents, there are three principal ones that apply to soil deposition and removal activities. The first one is the Soil Deposit and Removal Bylaw, as amended by council in 2017. This bylaw outlines the requirements for soil deposition and removal applications. The second bylaw is the Bylaw Notice Enforcement Bylaw. This bylaw provides staff with the ability to issue bylaw notices or fines where actions are in contravention of the bylaw. And the third one is the Soil Deposit and Removal Policy. This policy outlines the process and consultation requirements for applications exceeding 600 cubic meters of material, and those that are not deemed farm use by the Agricultural Land Commission. These applications are addressed through a centralized process to help guide applicants through the complex regulatory framework. The staff involved take in inquiries, process and review applications, complete any monitoring that may be required, including site visits, or reviewing progress reports prepared by qualified professionals, as well as completing any enforcement that is required. Staff maintain regular communications with these agencies for new applications, and when addressing files with enforcement activities. Approximately 75% of the township is located within the agricultural land reserve, and accordingly, a number of files involve the Agricultural Land Commission directly, or their staff. The A.A. Agricultural Land Commission and their staff are involved in with applications where the volume of material exceeds 600 cubic meters. For applications that are below this threshold, there's a standing resolution of council for the municipal engineer and staff to approve those applications. The Agricultural Land Commission staff also have the ability to make a determination on whether the soil that is required is for active farm use. In this case, this provides an exemption from the application of the township policy. The Agricultural Land Commission staff also provide some enforcement process with regards to soil deposit and removal within the township. However, this is typically limited to large files or egregious offenses. The primary focus of the Agricultural Land Commission is on agricultural improvement, which is also a common goal for the township, as outlined in many of our strategies and documents. However, the township also focuses on a number of other criteria, as they directly affect our community and local context. These would include drainage of the subject property and surrounding properties, the routes of travel for any trucks that may be depositing or removing material, as well as the potential for migration of invasive species or contaminated soils within the So a number of activities occur without the required permits in place, or in contravention of the applicable permits. In these cases, staff are also directly involved in the enforcement process. These enforcement activities are completed directly by staff located within the soils department, and this enforcement is completed in accordance with the applicable policies whereby enforcement action is only undertaken where there exists a clearly identified complainant, and with the goal of seeking voluntary compliance. The typical process for enforcement is outlined here, whereby following a complaint, staff would initiate an investigation as to the nature of the concern. For soil matters, this would typically involve the removal, or involve a visit to the site, as well as a review of any past files for the property. Once the complaint had been validated, staff would work with the owner involved to seek voluntary compliance. This often includes a review of the applicable sections of the bylaw, as well as an explanation of what actions may be required to bring the property back into compliance. If this effort fails, typically a stop work order would be posted on the property to prevent further uncompliant actions, along with a copy sent to the owner. This may also occur if staff were unable to make contact with the property owner in question. If no response or action is undertaken by the owner, bylaw notices or fines are typically sent to the owner. These can be sent to the owner on a per day basis, on a per offense basis. Staff may also request that a letter from legal counsel be sent to the property owner to help encourage compliance. And finally, if still no action was undertaken, staff would typically pursue a legal injunction with the assistance of legal counsel, and also with municipal council authorization. However, the goal of this enforcement process is not to come to this step. So as mentioned previously, currently enforcement is only undertaken following a complaint on a reactive approach. For soil files, this can mean that extensive damage can be done in a fairly short period of time, and the remedial measures often involve removal of the material from the site. Earlier involvement in these cases could help to minimize the damage, often to environmentally sensitive areas, as well as to minimize the amount of remedial effort that's required. There are a number of cases where staff were aware of the activities proceeding without a permit, however, no enforcement action was taken as a complaint had not yet been So what is proposed for contextual enforcement, subject to council direction, is that proactive measures and earlier involvement could be undertaken in a series of specific circumstances. These would include where the soil deposition or removal is occurring in close proximity or within seven and a half meters of a high watermark of a Class A or Class B coded water course, where the property involved has been the subject of previous enforcement actions, where there's repeated violations, and the person or entity involved has been informed of the applicable bylaw or policy previously, where it's known that there are contaminated materials or invasive species involved, and where a threat to either the municipal infrastructure or public safety exists. If so directed, this would only be undertaken throughout the course of regular duties. Staff would not be actively looking for noncompliant files. It's not estimated that there would be any increase in cost for implementing contextual enforcement for soil deposition or removal. A number of statistics from 2017 are provided here to provide an overview of the workload within the department. So in the graph on the screen, we have the number of files that are open and closed on a per year basis. So the blue would be the number of files that were opened each year, and red would be the number of files that were closed each year. As shown, the recent years have shown a steady increase in workload. The 2017 numbers did drop off a little, however, this is viewed as a temporary drop off, as a number of larger files prevented us from attending sites as per typical use. Additionally, and as previously mentioned, the regulatory framework that we operate in is requiring additional time for each file to be completed. The number of active or ongoing files has been increasing over the last number of years, and currently, we have in excess of 340 active soil deposition or removal files. Within 2017, there was permitted the removal or deposit of approximately 70,000 cubic meters of material. So to put that into context, that's approximately 10,000 trucks. Additionally, in terms of permit and volume fees, there was just over $62,000 collected. Again, this is anticipated to increase in subsequent years, with the May 2017 update of the Soil Deposit and Removal Bylaw, whereby the volume fee for material was increased from 50 cents a cubic meter to a dollar per cubic meter. The amount of overtime worked in 2017 was fairly extensive, and this is continuing a trend from recent years. This is needed particularly to address enforcement items as they occur, as well as to monitor the soils hotline. So we have a soils hotline to receive concerns from residents on a 24-hour, seven days a week basis. So in terms of the current resources within the department, we have one full-time soil deposit and removal coordinator, and additionally, we have one temporary or seasonal staff member hired since approximately 2013 on a revolving basis to address the workload. One of the recommendations is to make this position regular full-time. This is desired to, A, minimize the amount of overtime being incurred, as well as to avoid the inefficiencies with regards to turnover and training that's required every time a new person takes a position, as whenever new personnel are brought in, extensive training is required on the regulations involved, as well as becoming familiar with all of the active files. The funding allotment for a regular full-time soil bylaw officer is approximately $80,000. And the other objective of having this person full-time is to be able to spend more time on education and awareness of the regulations involved, to help prevent actions from occurring that require subsequent enforcement. There's also a number of technological advancements that may be particularly applicable to the soil deposit and removal process. One is the ability for drone utilization. So typically, for files right now, the amount of volume that is deposited or removed on property is calculated as seven cubic meters per truck. Estimating this volume via a drone would provide a more accurate measurement. And additionally, right now, for larger files, or for files that have a large amount of material involved, typically, there's a before and after survey required. So there would be a survey of the property to establish the existing surface, and then once the project is completed, there would be a survey of the property again to determine the final elevations. Utilizing a drone in lieu of this could help provide a more detailed, accurate surface to address that concern. So proposed is a pilot project whereby applicants could be able to use a drone instead of traditional survey methods for these large applications. This would not be anticipated to incur any cost for the township, as they would be paid for by the township in lieu of the other, or paid for by the applicant in lieu of the other survey services they would have to complete. If this pilot was successful, it could subsequently be expanded whereby the township could contract a service provider to fly a drone over a property for a number of specific activities. Two key applications for soil deposit removal would include, some properties are involved in bringing material in, and also undergo extensive regrading on their property at the same point in time. So by completing it with a drone survey, it would present a more accurate picture of the total amount of material that was brought in on the property. And additionally, a number of properties within the township have very limited access, so utilizing a drone could provide an access opportunity there. Before, it would be used for contracts. More investigation would be required, sit into the privacy requirements. However, the township would not have a need to collect any personal information, such as license plates or images of people or places. So it's not anticipated to be a significant regulatory hurdle, but it is something that we would have to address. In terms of the options for formal enforcement activities, there's four that were presented, and applicable under the bylaw and relevant provincial acts. Again, these are only utilized if voluntary compliance has not been achieved previously. The first and more common one is the issuance of a bylaw notice or fine. The maximum penalty under this enforcement option is $500, and is appealed to an adjudicator if the recipient so desires. The second and third option have significant legal costs associated with them. The second one involves the prosecution of an offense in provincial court, typically utilized for more egregious offenses, whereby the maximum penalty that can be incurred is $10,000. However, this is a fairly lengthy and complicated process, and not typically used within the township for soil deposition and removal concerns. The third option is to seek an injunction in Supreme Court. Again, this involves significant effort on behalf of legal counsel, and typically is only utilized for serious infractions. This option can order remedial actions to be undertaken, and it's an order of the court. This process also involves a hearing in the Supreme Court. And the fourth option is to have the township complete remedial actions on the property themselves, and subsequently to invoice for those actions back to the property owner. This option is not typically utilized, as it's preferable to have the owners complete the actions themselves, and also the remedial activities may involve environmental approvals. This option may also be a condition of the third one, whereby if they don't comply with a court order, remedial actions could be undertaken by the township. And that concludes the presentation. I'll take any questions you may have.
Hey, thank you very much, Mr. Wolfing. Great presentation. Council Fox?
Thank you, and I appreciate the information that you've shared with us, and the fact that we're taking a look at this once again. A few things here. Right now, we focus on a reactive approach, where it's complaint-driven approach that primarily drives whether we visit a piece of property or we investigate. I'm not suggesting in any way that we go to a totally proactive approach, because I think that that can have its benefits, but can also have its liabilities. But I would like to see us be, I guess, demonstrate some due diligence, such that if a soils bylaw officer had an inkling, or had a suspicion of something happening on a piece of property, that they would have the authority and ability to go and follow that suspicion, or inkling, or whatever you want to call it, intuition, and actually visit the property. That would be preemptive on any formal complaint. And I think that it could be guised under the proactive approach, but I think that when we talk, and you talked about the efficiencies associated with getting someone in the position of being a soil bylaw officer full-time, and then not having to retrain, and so on and so forth, once that person's been in the job for a while, I think there'll be some instinctive elements associated with it, whether it be individual properties, individual areas, time of year, when they are actually maybe investigating something, a complaint, but on the way to the complaint, they see something that's a little bit not looking too good, and might be suspicious. So why wouldn't they be proactive? Why wouldn't they take the initiative on their own? So it's not, I don't think you could guise it under completely proactive, but I think that what I'm saying is, the officer has to have the liberty, and hopefully the ability and intuitiveness to be able to follow their instinct in situations where they find suspicious. I think it's not a distinct difference from strictly complaint-driven approach, but I think it's valued approach in that context. One of the things I find, and found, is that there's a lot of people who are not entirely familiar, don't understand the difference between depositing soil on a community development project, or, in other words, building a house, versus a soil deposit. And I'll give you an example. And the example would be at the corner of 52nd and 264th. An individual built a house there, and some of you may or may not be able to visualize this particular house, but it was two stories tall from the ground, but actually, from the road level, it was almost level. And they filled a tremendous amount of fill there. It wasn't a fill site. It was not a fill site. It was a, is the right word, community development site? Maybe, Mr. Sam, what do you call it when you're building a house? It's under the license?
Development application.
Development application site, okay? So there's a distinct difference, and people don't understand that. And so what I'm suggesting here is, when we give out a permit for a soil deposit site, A, the soil deposit site permit be bigger, and a specific color. When it's a development site, development permit site, it'd be a different color and bigger. And I'll give you another example of that. At 24th and 240th right now, I assume it's a development site. I looked at the telephone pole, and the thing's about this big. I couldn't see that if my life depended on it. It does say permit on the top, so I'm assuming it's the right permit, but we need to make those bigger, so people can understand and differentiate between the two. You know, if you're doing it under development permit, it does make sense, and you have to understand it, but people who don't understand the difference can get them easily confused. Under active files, what's the closing date of an active file? What's the duration of an active file? Because this is another issue that comes up.
It would really depend on the application involved. Some may extend a year, and typically, the permit is issued for a year. However, we do have the ability to extend those if the application was not yet completed within the yearly basis.
So on the permit that's posted, if it was bigger, you could actually put the date that it actually closes. So the public who's driving by, or anybody that is driving by, can see the duration of this, okay? Up until this specific date. Because what we find typically is, A, deposits work on soil availability, weather conditions, and so on, and size. And that relates a little bit to availability, because this is a fairly large one, and they've got a fair amount of soil to go in. It can take some time, because it's just not readily available. But if there was a specific date that it was ended, they can reapply, or new people can extend it, but then that would be on the permit as well. Because I think that's important information for people that are actually going to make a formal complaint, because they don't know when they end. They've seen the sign for two years, three years sometimes, and, well, when does it finish? You know, can you just continue on? So that piece of information, I think, is important. More advertising of the soils hotline, especially in the spring and summer. I think that maybe on the township page, and I'm not sure what's been done in the past, but if we do have a hotline, I think we need to make it, our public aware of it, so that they can, in one way or another, access that and make a complaint through that route, okay? This person that we're hiring, it's really unique how soil deposits, generally, especially the illegal ones, happen on weekends and after hours. So what are their hours going to be? Are they going to be the conventional eight to five, nine to five, five days a week? Or are we going to have them, and I noticed, I think you said 430-plus hours of overtime? Mostly, that's weekends, after hours, going to complaints, looking at them, calling people out to go directly to that. So what are the hours going to be that that individual's going to work? Because I think that becomes important for the purposes of, you have to catch these people off guard. And the best way to catch them off guard is catch them when they don't think you're working, when your personnel's working. And so that becomes an important piece, I think. One of the biggest issues that I see right now is the proliferation in the agricultural land reserve of Kenworths. There are an amazing number of individuals who are taking off soil and putting on gravel to park Kenworths, Peterbilt's, and whatever. And I mean, I'm not down in the area that I live. It's amazing how many people, and they're very aware that they can get three trucks, but they take off that soil, they throw it over to the side, and then, is that a soil deposit? When someone brings in 30, 40, 50 loads of Sumas crush to be able to make a truck park on good agricultural land, does that qualify as a soil deposit, or not qualify as a soil deposit?
It would qualify as an activity requiring a permit under the applicable soil deposit and removal bylaw.
Okay, so that becomes an important piece of the education as well, because we're seeing more and more of those truck parks starting to proliferate. I guess, and one of the things that I will still say is the best, and I think the most efficient way of catching people that are not complying with the soil deposit bylaw is a set of eyes. And I have to say that, in my experience working with the soil deposit people, that I have been very, they have been very helpful. And I know personally, in the last four months, I've shut down how many? We're on three or four illegal soil deposits, only by driving by, taking notes, address, what's happening, maybe a picture or two, and pictures don't lie, and I still think that we, as citizens, have to take a very concerted effort if we're going to stop these. And so each of those components becomes important, the education, the hotline, all those aspects become really important if we're going to preserve our farmland, for the purposes for which it was intended. which it was intended. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Qualley.
Thanks. Thanks for this, and the report was really interesting to read, too. Thank you for that. The number of hours of overtime stood out for me. It's a lot, and like Counselor Fox said, it's evenings and weekends primarily, I'm assuming. We collected, if you could go back to that slide that had the overtime hours, it looks like we collected, yeah, $62,000 in permit and volume fees. Maybe this isn't a question for you, rather for finance, but are we sort of at the maximum level of fees we can charge for this right now? Do you know?
So in terms of the permit and volume fees, the permit fee is outlined in the soil deposit removal bylaw. So it's at $250 for a new applicant and $500 if it originated from a stop work order. So if we had a complaint and they issued a stop work order first, then the application fee doubles. The volume fee used to be 50 cents per cubic meter prior to May 2017, and that's applicable to all applications prior to May 2017. It is now a dollar per cubic meter. So again, it would be anticipated that the volume revenue would be increasing as we move forward with subsequent applications.
So is that dollar, that's offset by us. Can we charge more than that or is that regulated provincially? Do you know?
I'm not aware that it's regulated provincially, and it is set in our bylaw itself.
So I understand raising those fees, you know, sort of drives people to do it illegally because they want to avoid the fees, but those fees aren't even coming close to covering our cost for these deposits. So I didn't see in your report a suggestion to increase fees related to this. Is there a reason you're not suggesting an increase of fees?
We did raise the fees in May of last year, so we weren't suggesting any increases in fees at this point, just to see how that revenue would play out with the new bylaw and how we move forward in 2018 under the new applications that we anticipate to be received, but that's something that we could review in subsequent years again as well.
Yeah, I think this needs to be a cost recovery situation here. We can't have everybody in the municipality paying for these deposits and permits. I mean, it needs to be sort of a user-pay type system. Further to Counselor Fox's point about having extra eyes on the, you know, just observing what's going on, I wonder, are the neighbors within a certain radius advised of soil deposit permits when they're issued?
So under the soil deposit removal policy, there is a public notification requirement for any and all applications.
But that's pre-approval, correct?
Correct.
So after, my suggestion would be that after permission has been granted, that the people in that same perimeter be given notification that, hey, your neighbor has now been allowed to do X. This is the parameter of their permit. And to Counselor Fox's point, the neighbors would then be sort of monitoring the activity that's going on there because it is quite inconvenient sometimes for the neighbors. And so, you know, if the person who's holding the permit knows their neighbors fully understand the parameters of their permit, they might be more inclined to stick within the actual confines of the permit. So my suggestion would be to expand the notification to a post, you know, a permit approval notification that says this is what your neighbor was given a permit for, this is the activity that'll be going on, and this is how long we expect it to last. And on that notification, you could include the hotline number. If you suspect that they're working outside of these parameters, don't hesitate to call our hotline. So just having extra eyes and ears on the area, I think, could be helpful as well. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you. Very good points being made, also very good research and presentation. I really appreciated that. Just a couple of comments and a couple of questions. So I noted from the report that actually a number of other communities are in the process of updating their policies, which I think is helpful to look at the context of kind of challenges that we have as a region because with the increases in the fill deposits and, you know, the potential lack of oversight sometimes that many other communities are facing a similar challenge. So I think it's interesting to note that we are also doing this on a regular basis to make sure that our policy is adequate in that situation. And just for myself, I'm very supportive of the idea of getting another staff member because I do see that there's a strong correlation between the active files and the fact that we are requiring more individuals to be working in this area. And so I think it makes sense rationally to have somebody do this as a full-time job. I had a question regarding, it may be dated information, but I have from time to time seen a soil watch signs around, and I wondered if that is something that exists in our community. I know we're talking about, you know, the eyes keeping track of what's going on, but I didn't know if soil watch was still actually an entity.
So we do have signs at all of the entrances to the community, on all the roads, on the entrances to the community with the soils hotline number for residents to obtain it in that way.
Okay, that's helpful because it's like block watch. I had a question about the drone project, and so you answered my question in that it's a proponent that would be paying for this. So I just wondered if that would have any implications though with respect to training? Is that something we'd have to undertake ourselves? Or could they get their own person, their own operator for the drones?
We would anticipate that they would get their own operator and their own company on a service contract.
Okay, all right. But I do think it's generally a good idea, and also just in support of the proposition that earlier intervention is helpful because one of the things that I've perceived is over the course of time, it becomes more difficult to remediate once a problem has been very protracted. And so, and then that also brings in my final question, and these are, I guess, two policy questions. I have noted from time to time, if the Agricultural Land Commission gets involved in the remediation of a property, that they sort of seize jurisdiction of that for the remediation, and the township plays what I'll call a supplementary role for the areas of jurisdiction that we have. And I just wondered if it might be possible to consider having some kind of memorandum of understanding or some operational procedures so that those two entities could collaborate more closely for the areas that they are in charge of. You know, if you have hydrogeology, for example, that's going to affect local residents' wells, I would want to make sure that people have that addressed in a timely manner as opposed to potentially, you know, the duration of the rehabilitation could take a couple of years. And so, you know, just a mechanism through which those two agencies could work closer together.
Okay. We do interact with the Agricultural Land Commission's staff on a fairly frequent basis, particularly for soil deposition and removal permits, so probably on a weekly basis, if not more frequently, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Counsel Long.
Thanks, Your Worship. I've got a number of points. This is when I wish I could have more than one window open on my iPad here, but I was going to ask financially, your report is entitled, "For Counsel to Consider the Soil's Options", and it says it's included in the budget, right? But in the budget, it has zero there, "by soil bylaw officer." So does this mean that this has to be added to the budget? Or, but it says it's in the budget. Maybe I can, you know, maybe question, Your Worship, to the finance.
Back.
Karen.
Yes, through the chair to Counsel Long. It's included in the budget right now. It is funded, which is why it's showing zero. It's a combination of seasonal salaries reallocated to this position and some revenues generated by the position that cause it to be zero in the budget.
Okay, so in considering this report, we're not increasing the budget at the moment?
That's correct.
Okay, and then getting back to some of the other points, and they've all been interesting, but we do have to, and we've established this a long time ago, rely on a professional, I don't know if it's an agrologist or a soil expert with a certificate. So after a permit has been issued, these reports have to come in and staff reviews those, right? So we don't necessarily want to encourage neighbors to be, you know, what are you doing over there kind of stuff. But I mean, it is, let's be clear, though, those reports will come, a permit is issued, we get signed off reports from professionals verifying the type of fill, the size and all that kind of stuff, right?
Yeah, that's typically for the larger files. We would have reports from a professional agrologist or a qualified professional. For some of the smaller applications, if it only involves in the tens of cubic meters, then it's typically done with just a staff involvement.
Okay, well, that's good to know then, like as Counsel Qualley says, if that smaller permit is issued and then, you know, 50,000 trucks start showing up, maybe someone will call the hotline. I think there was something else I was going to suggest on that. So this, it has been asked several times if the soils officer would be working on the weekends. Is that going to be the case? And you did have a slide up earlier that talked about the proactive duties of this particular officer. So in other words, there are certain parameters by which they're going to be diligent on, let's say, in a proactive way, and the others will be reported in. But is there a plan to have them on the weekend?
We haven't considered the exact hours, but it's definitely something we would take under consideration when we post the position.
Yeah, and then, of course, if it's a, you know, you can always put, this is what I was mumbling earlier, you can just put Counselor Fox's number on the sign because he's very diligent to these things.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Qualley, and follow up.
Just one more last question. How many cubic meters are in a truckload?
Approximately seven.
So a truck costs $7, basically.
Correct.
To drop. Okay, I'm just trying to get the, plus the application fee of $250 or $500, right? Okay, just trying to get that clear in my head. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your presentation. Okay, Counsel Fox.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up to that. If our fee is a dollar per cubic meter, what's Abbotsford's or Surry's, do you know?
I don't have that off the top of my head, however, I do know that we did review other jurisdictions' fees when we set ours at a dollar per cubic meter.
Yeah, the only thing is, I don't want to see us as the cheapest. I'd far prefer us to see us the most expensive, only because, you know, excavating companies and truckers don't like to pay more than they have to. So if they've gone up to a dollar fifty or more, it would be interesting to know that comparator.
Good. Also like to speak for the farmers. There's a lot of farmers who have very good intentions to enhance their farmland, and really that's what this purpose is. So on the one hand, you hate to unduly tax the farmer who's trying to improve his lands. And certainly, there's a desire to go after those who are abusing the system, but we are, the ultimate for a lot of it is improving farmland. Can't forget that. Counsel Long.
Thanks for that, but I also wanted to put in, if we've already doubled them just this past May, you know, I don't know how far, I guess you're going to see how it goes, which is what you said several times in the presentation, that we have doubled the fees and let's see if we can get, and with this bylaw officer, we may be able to get some more funds in as well. So hopefully, we'll get closer to being able to support itself in terms of finances.
Counsel Qualley.
Sorry, one last question. Since Counselor Fox put you on the spot, I thought I might as well now, too. So how many, do you know what the average deposit volume is for an average application here in the township? Just a guesstimate.
I don't have the average in front of me, but what I would say is they are highly varied. We see some in excess of 30,000 cubic meters and we see some in the neighborhood of 30 cubic meters. So they are highly variable and it depends on what the applicant is proposing.
So would you say we receive more larger ones or more smaller ones?
We typically receive more smaller ones.
Okay, thank you for that.
Counsel Long.
67 cents a cubic meter, according to the website for Abbotsford, but their permit application fee is considerably higher. So that's interesting because if you say there's a whole lot of smaller ones, maybe the permit fee could be looked at, right? Because like was pointed out here, if you're only going to pay seven or eight bucks a truckload, the actual tonnage fee isn't as important perhaps as the other fee.
One of the interesting parameters to keep in mind is for people who want to amend their driveway or, you know, fill in potholes if they need 30 cubic meters of material, asking them to pay $1,000 for a permit fee is a pretty significant barrier that they would face. So that's one of the reasons why we kept ours a little bit lower and bumped up the volume fee a little bit as well.
Yeah, well, Abbotsford has a higher one for within the ALR. But anyway, very interesting. Thank you.
Okay, I think that pretty much covers it. Thank you very much. All right, so a motion to receive the presentation. Counselor Qualley, second by Counselor Davis. Discussion on the receipt motion. I will call a question on D1. Carries unanimously. And we move over to reports to counsel. F1 is draft 2018-2022, financial plan. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Qualley, second by Counselor Sparrow. Any discussion? Counselor Richter.
Yes, I'd like to move division, and I have a question as well.
Certainly. So is there a second motion to divide? Counselor Davis, and just a show of hands, all those in favor, opposed? Counselor Fox opposed, so carries to divide. Counselor Richter.
Yes. The report references on the last page, an attachment B, which includes, I'm not sure if it's an additional 1.25 million or if the 1.25 million is included in what we're being asked to vote on right now. And I was wondering if I could get clarification on that.
Ms. Clar.
Yes, through your chair to Counsel Richter. That is included in the 2.47% total increase that we're talking about, which is the 1.95 for the base and the .52 for additional. So it will result in no further increase.
Okay, so you know, for the discussion, I'm going to call the question on, this motion has four parts, so we'll just call them one to four. So number one, I'm going to call the question on number one, F1. Carries unanimously. And F2, any discussion? Call the question on F, or sorry, F1, point two. Carries unanimously. And on point three of F1, Counsel Richter.
Yes, I think all things considered that 1.95% is probably a reasonable increase, although I still remain concerned, particularly as a result of the newly assessed, B.C. assessment values that have come out, that a predominance of people living on rural or SR properties out in the rural areas are unfairly treated under any budget we put forward because their property values are clearly over the theoretical average of 813,000. So I think that the 1.95 is supportable, and I will be supporting that. I don't think an additional .52 is supportable, and I think it will definitely handicap those people out on the rural properties.
Thank you. It's an interesting point. I'd just like to ask Ms. Clarif, some clarification. So as I understand, Counsel Richter had mentioned that rural properties are over the 813,000. Where's that 813,000 come from? Because rural properties have a variety of values depending on the size, location, type of use.
The 813,000 is the single representative, single-family dwelling. The rural properties, I believe, came in at about 1.2 million for an average, which is the average assessed values divided by the number of properties. But the more important piece of average information is the residential increase right now. The average residential increase is about 13.9%. So for subcategories within residential, if they have a higher increase than the 13.9%, then they will pay a little bit more taxes than people whose increase equals the average or is lower than the average. Single-family dwellings this year are not being hit as hard as they were last year. It's more the condos and the multifamily that are going to be in the 30% range this year, and the rural properties as well.
And the rural properties, what was the average percent increase in rural properties?
Just find out.
Just curious because, you know, I want to make.
I believe it was about 51%.
51% is the average. So anybody who is above 51 will pay a little bit above, and so it still works out in averages. So I just want to make sure it's clear on that point. Thank you. Counsel Long.
I was just going to point out that it seems that the condominiums and multifamily are getting hit a little bit harder this year, too. So I guess it's in flux at all times, Your Worship.
Thank you. And they've, as I look back in history, they actually didn't go up as fast as some of the other ones, so it's all about the market. Counsel Fox.
Yeah, two points. Number one, living in one of those rural areas, it's obvious if you own land, you're paying a lot this year. My house didn't go up. None of my neighbors went up particularly, but the land value went up substantially. So if you own property in the lower mainland, and I think that's pretty much across the board, even if you own 10,000 square foot lots, et cetera, et cetera, you pay for the privilege of living in the ALR and owning five, 10, 15, whatever acreage, I'm not sure. The second thing is, a goodly number of people that live in the ALR actually get a heck of a good deal if they have farm status. I know a friend who pays a heck of a good deal if they have farm status. I know a friend who pays $37 a year taxes. Why? Because he keeps bees on his property. I never knew bees were so valuable. His property taxes would be well over $4,000. But because he has bees, they're substantially less. He and I don't talk about things like that, obviously. I don't have the farm tax exemption. But there are a variety of ways in which, of course, living in the agricultural land reserve, bigger properties, you can get farm exemption and get your taxes decreased. And the last thing is, of course, many of the people living in, in, on large properties are seniors and they can defer their taxes too. So a lot of people in South Langley, I know, and I'm sure in many other areas willingly, do defer their taxes through the program with the provincial government, which is always an advantage. They, they perceive an advantage when they sell. So.
Thank you. And it just goes to the argument that farm the land you're on and there's a, there's a break for you and that's what you want to do is get food production on agricultural land.
Absolutely.
And it's there for a reason. So, thank you. Councillor Long?
More bonus for getting old, I guess. Question though, that's, that we, there was a review and initiated by Metro Vancouver in terms of what the tax exemption for farming would be. And there was some movement towards some adjustments there. Is there any update from staff on that? Because it's a very good point. And it's, it's a amount that was maybe even arbitrarily set so many, many years ago, how much farm gate sales you have to produce to, to gain farm status. But I certainly think we should be looking into that some more, especially the township where it affected the absolute most, you know, in terms of the urban development of the region. If staff don't have an answer right now, I should be interested to find out what the status is of that and whether, you know, we need to have more discussion in that respect.
Through the chair to councillor Long. There is a review that is, that is, that was completed recently and it did have a number of different initiatives. One example is the, the exemption on land in the agricultural area is 50%. They pay 50% less school and other taxes. So there, there is definitely a review going on right now and I don't have the, I don't have it right in front of me, but it is something that I could get you a copy of for sure.
Okay, so it's not going to affect this tax year?
No, I don't.
There's no change is being proposed for this year?
No.
So maybe we should be monitoring that in terms of where, where it lands for next year.
Yeah, Metro Vancouver's doing that. And also, things they're looking at is the minimum amount you need to produce to qualify for farm status. So, so as that has been staying stagnant for many years, there may be a time for adjustments. They are looking at all of those things to, to improve it. But I think the bottom line is, we want our farmland farmed and, and, and that's an encouragement to, for people to produce food on.
So could we get an update later on in the year?
Sure.
You know, maybe a staff re-
Miss Sinclair can bring that forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
When it comes forward. Yeah, thank you. Okay, any further discussion on point three? Seeing none, I'm going to call question on F1.03. Carries unanimously. And move on to point four. Any discussion on point four of the recommendation? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Carries with councillor Richter opposed. Okay, thank you. Clears off F1. We move to correspondence. Several items where some action. There's a Langley intensive case management team. There's a letter in our, that we've received. And there's also a request that we consider approving presentation, a request from them. And I think this is from the Langley Community Services Society and regarding that. So I think that would be an excellent thing for council. So councillor Whitmarsh, councillor Arneson seconds. A discussion on G1. Seeing none, I'll call the question on G1. Councillor Richter's in favour. Okay. Carries unanimously. Oh, were you in favour or opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, it counted views in favour. G2, consent to Metro Vancouver Regional Park Service Amendment by law 1255. There's also a letter from Metro Vancouver, Mr Plagnall. And we are to consider the following motion at council, that the council of township of Langley approves adoption of Metro Vancouver Regional District Park Service amending by law number 1255, 2017 by providing consent on behalf of the electors. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Qualley, a seconder, is councillor Fox. Discussion on G2. Seeing none, I'll call a question. And carries unanimously. We move on to minutes of committees. H1 is seniors advisory, agriculture advisory and economic enhancement and council priorities committees. Could I have a motion to receive? Adopt a minutes. Councillor Qualley, second by councillor Fox. Any discussion on those? Seeing none, I'll call the question on H1. Carries unanimously. H2 is the agriculture advisory and economic enhancement committee who recommend motions that we endorse the 2018 work plan as presented. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Davis, seconder. It's councillor Fox. Discussion on that. Seeing none, I'll call the question on H2. And carries unanimously. Other business? I provided a notice of motion and I would like to move the motion and then I'll speak to it. So I'll move the motion and councillor Sparrow seconds it. Thank you. And this, had some discussions with Metro Vancouver, with Ms Mason, and that there is, that they're looking at, at improving, strengthening, amending their bylaw in regards to providing relief for DCCs, for proponents who come forward with affordable housing options under, under strict definition of affordable housing. And I would hope that with, with the need that there is in the township of Langley, that perhaps we could gain to, is get a report from staff on how we could mirror the Metro Vancouver by law so that we can basically remove roadblocks and create an environment whereby developers and independent organizations who wish to provide affordable housing options. And we know it's very, very expensive for them to do it, even when they own the land, it's difficult for them to come up with a pro forma that actually works. And so to help remove barriers and to encourage, this is one thing that, that we could do to, to accommodate that. It's also part of our township housing action plan. I know there's many other points in the township housing action plan that can be used. Again, it's opening up some of the tools that municipalities have at their disposal to assist in a growing need. So that is the reason I moved this and I would hope that I can get support from council so we can move forward on this. And councillor Fox?
Yeah, I think this is a good and timely motion with a review that's going on in Metro Vancouver. I think that it's important that we dovetail and our staff work with theirs, share information, share what, what the perspectives are. And we can hopefully move forward in a constructive way in concert with Metro Vancouver as well. So I think this is very timely.
Thank you. Councillor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. It's great to see some leadership in this area. I think it's a, a good starting place. I will be supporting this, but I actually had wanted to comment and add some language to this because you referenced the housing action plan. And if staff is going to put a report together, you know, either, either through this notice of motion or another one, which maybe I can make in the future if this amendment's not supported, I, I would like to have some areas of the housing action plan that are directly related to this to be considered in the staff report, coming back for council's consideration. So I don't know if you want me to add that language now or if you want to take a vote and we'll see what happens.
I'll just ask Mr Seffy, I believe there's some work being done now on the housing action plan that we'll be receiving a report and which would basically accommodate-
That's correct, Your Worship.
Okay.
So I know there's some work. It's just because of the metro work on the bylaw, I wanted us to, to jump on this one while they're doing it.
I'm dovetailing.
But thank you, it's a good point.
Okay, that's fine.
Exactly on the same page I am. Thank you. Councillor Richter?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the, whatever report comes to us will include a definition of what is affordable. And also, that consideration will be given to integrating affordable units into existing or planned subdivisions and housing areas. So we're not creating areas of affordable housing, but integrated affordable housing into all areas. So will that be included or do we need a-
Yeah, thank you. It's in the, in the motion. It is in relation to waiving or reducing DCCs. So reducing DCCs would certainly be for those projects would, which are not 100% affordable housing, but perhaps have a component of affordable housing in it. So that ratio can, can be used. Also, the Metro Vancouver by law does give a very good definition of what affordable housing is. I don't have that with me now, but they're looking at strengthening that and allowing, allowing for a little bit more, it's, I guess, making it a little bit easier to-
Yeah, but I'm thinking of other areas. For example, I believe, was it Sanich or Sook, one of those areas? Some other areas in Ontario, which basically worked out arrangements around having 20% of any new development consisting of affordable units. And I think that's reasonable and it also doesn't stigmatize any particular area.
Thank you. So I, I think that will be part of the report on exactly what, what this definition of affordable housing is. And there are other tools, and that's one of the tools that you just mentioned councillor Richter, and that is, council could impose on all developments, but they can also, there's ways of doing it. So certainly other tools in the housing action plan that, that can be brought forward. Councillor Qualley?
Yeah, I'd like to echo councillor Arneson's comments and thank you for your leadership in this. I think it's important that we're having these conversations now. It'll be interesting to see what the province has in store when their new budget, when that comes down later this month, if there's any way to assist municipalities with some of these challenges around the reduction of DCCs. I'm anxious to see the staff report on this and I think it's important that, that it's sort of widespread, that we're not the only people doing this. I think Metro's initiative on this is really important so that all of the municipalities have, share in the responsibility to provide affordable housing, that it isn't just dependent on a couple of municipalities to sort of carry the load for the region. So I think it's important that everybody, everybody participates in this. So thank you for bringing this forward. I'm, I'm anxious to support it.
Thank you. Councillor Long?
Well, so I just, I don't want us to get too caught up because the, therefore be resolved is asking for taking the temperature, let's say, of everybody else and see what they're doing. So I'm really, really happy to see that. But when you mentioned Metro Vancouver, looking at adjusting its fees, it better do something because the, the increase in the DCCs is, is huge over the next many years. The township's going to be hit very, very hard with it. Councillor Fox and I did everything we could to try and soften the blow at the Metro meeting, but unfortunately, that's the, you know, the DCC program is massive for Metro Vancouver. So it's all very appropriate that they look at reducing those extremely high DCCs for these types of projects. So working in concert with them is great, but I think the, those that are going to be building these types of projects will be really looking at those DCCs that Metro are going to charge because they're huge. So this is, this is all very timely and I certainly support your worship, but let's see what the research shows. And, and I think councillor Fox and I and others that are involved with Metro will be pushing hard to make sure that there's a good quid pro quo in there for these types of housing projects that are being initiated in Metro Vancouver.
Thank you. Councillor Davis?
Thank you. I just, this is the third councillor who's talked about timely. Is there, is there a timeline or is this, or is that going to matter? Like is, with Metro, just to comment?
There's no timeline for us. Metro Vancouver is going through the process and I believe they're looking at around, I mean, it's a process they have to go through and they have to bring it to the, to the board. But just knowing that the staff is working on it to bring to the board, it, it could be this spring. And so I thought it'd be great for the township of Langley to be aware of that and to work with them. And so that our definition of affordable housing equals their definition of affordable housing. There isn't, you know, a different playing fields all over the place. So it's one thing to look at. And, and also there are organizations right now that are trying to put together financing for affordable housing and finding it very difficult. And so then anything we can do to help that as soon as possible, there's quite a need and I think that's where it's timely. So.
Okay.
But we are working, I am looking at trying to move it with the Metro Vancouver's bylaw.
Thank you.
At the same time. It'd be our bylaw, but it's just similar. Councillor Fox?
Yes. Yeah, Metro Vancouver's date is May 1st. Actually, we talked about this and, and I asked a question about it at the last Metro meeting. And it's pretty quick and they're moving very, very quickly. So A, the timeline's pretty compressed. B, some of those definitions are very critical to understanding the whole, whole piece. So, yeah.
Great, thank you. I see no further discussion, so I'll call the question on I1. Carries unanimously. Is there any other business? Councillor Richter?
Yes, I understand that the provincial ombuds person is making a visit to Langley and I'm glad because we don't often see the ombuds person out this far. And I was wondering if it's not too late, if we could put an ad on the TOL page and the TOL website with regards to anybody wishing to talk to the ombuds person, that they'll be in Langley and where they'll be and when they'll be.
Back on, take this direction. Thank you.
What was the date?
I don't, I, I can't remember. I just remember it was in February. But I just think it's so nice that they're coming out here. I think we should show our appreciation by supporting their efforts to meet people here.
Thank you. Councillor Fox?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify one thing here on today's distribution package. It was item number 10. It talks about, this is a memo from the Princess and the P. And it talks about a land in the southeast corner, Five Corners, Maryville, BC. And it talks, we will support a new house on the vacant land. Is that land not zoned commercial at this point in time?
Is that the corner property? Is that the only stuff?
Well, I'm assuming it is.
Yeah. Corner 216th and 48 on the southeast.
Southeast corner, Your Worship, and I think it has a designation. I'm not sure if it's actually zoned per se. Mr Seffy, do you recall the property adjacent to Mr, um, sorry?
I can try and look it up quickly.
Yeah, it, it does say somewhere in here, something about three properties.
Regarding the three parcels of the land.
The three parcels of land. Oh, right. Okay, and about the, I don't know, seventh line down. Include all matters related to the three parcels of land. And I, I'm not sure. Is that, that piece, the travellers hotel and the one next door? I'm just not sure what the reference is here. I'm trying to get a context for this.
Yeah, so maybe Mr Seffy can get that.
Worship, that's our understanding. It's those three properties because they had some historical significance. The, the issue though is the use of the corner property as it's been acquired. And Mr Seffy and Mr Richardson are just looking up the zoning.
The current zoning, Your Worship, is suburban residential SR1.
SR1, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Qualley?
Thanks. This morning I read through the provincial website that the independent commission or independent committee for the revitalization of the ALR and ALC has started their stakeholder consultations. And the closest one to Langley is happening on February 21st, 1st in Abbotsford, that there won't be any public consultations here in Langley, but that the survey's open till April 4th. So I'd like to send that information to staff for inclusion on the township website so that our residents can take part, if possible, in the public consultation meeting in Abbotsford. There's other locations, but Abbotsford is the only one remotely close to us and provide information on the survey. So I'll forward that to staff for inclusion in the, hopefully the township information page.
Thank you. Councillor Richter?
Well, I just was wondering about item eight with referencing the tree bylaw in Brookswood and if staff was going to get in touch with the writer of the letter on, in regards to the tree bylaw.
Yeah, it's been forwarded to community development division. Mr Seffy, I don't know if you already have or if it's in-
Yes, Your Worship, I've had a chance to take a look at this, this morning and the preliminary research that staff have done demonstrate that the area is not subject to the, the tree bylaw. It is actually part of the, the developed area of Brookswood that is not subject of the, the tree protection bylaw. And the, the proposed buildings which have, the permits for which have not yet been issued are in full compliance with the zoning bylaw requirements.
Thank you. And I understand, just basically reading the, the email, that, that Ms Chiado, Chiado has been made aware of that by our staff. So I suppose you'll follow up and make her aware again. But it sounds like she already got her answer. Thank you. Any other business? Seeing none?
Termination.
Councillor Davis moves termination. Councillor Long seconded. All those in favour? Opposed, carried. Thank you.